All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Can you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting was scheduled, was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 9th, 2025, and amended on November 14th, 2025, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River and Lenoka Harbor post offices and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as requested by the Open Public Meeting Act. Can I have a roll call for attendance, please?
Mr. Armato?
Present.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Conity?
Here.
And Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Okay, now we're going to go into the Board of Education interviews. Will, do you want to?
Yeah, so we're going to conduct interviews right now, more for public here. Okay, you are watching, okay? There is no interaction allowed from the public gallery, no talking, no cheering, none of those things. Okay, we have chosen at random which board candidate is going to go first. The other three are going to be sequestered, to not really have a better word for it, in classrooms individually down here. Then we'll be swapping them out. Each interview will take about 15 minutes. The sororities will be asking questions, and then the board will be taking notes, and then we'll go through the four of them, and then we will go into private session. Okay, any questions from the gallery first? Okay, you guys know the rules, so I'll take it easy down the hall, and then we will get started.
All right.
Hi.
Good evening, Mrs. Sensa.
Do I need a thing?
Oh, the microphone, yes.
I wish I had my hands.
All right, thank you for applying. We're going to ask you a series of six questions.
Sure.
All right, first question, please introduce yourself to the Board of Education and give them a brief background about yourself.
Regina Desensas, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach, previous two-term Board Member. I have a Master Board Member Certificate from the NJSPA, and I also hold a Certified Board Leader, NJSPA, Board Member Academy requirements.
Okay, thank you. What motivated you to apply to be a Board Member for the Lacey Township Board of Education?
As soon as Ms. Claus announced that there was a vacancy, I applied the next day.
Okay. Community involvement is a big part of what makes Lacey strong. How have you taken part in or supported the community since becoming a resident?
Let's see, I have quite a bit here, let's see. During my six full years on the Board, I only missed one monthly business meeting, that's 71 out of 72 meetings I still attend today when I am in town, if not, I watch the meetings on YouTube. I attend regularly the MUA meetings, the Planning Board meetings, the Municipal Alliance, the Township Committee meetings, and for the past three years, I've also been attending the weekly afternoon County Commissioner meetings in Toms River. I went to over probably hundreds of school events, PTA events, in fact, I think I joined all parent-teacher groups while I was here, and I'm always doing something and going somewhere.
Okay, thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing our district right now?
Oh, of course, I knew that one was coming. Biggest challenges, I would say, are financial, student achievement, I don't see how it gets any, you know, more important than that, those are the two most important things, keeping the finances together, meeting all the budgetary requirements, and improving student achievement.
Okay. A controversial issue divides the community. How would you help the Board make a fair decision?
Make a fair decision?
Mm-hmm.
You have to weigh all the pros and cons.
Is there anything else you'd like to share or that you would like the Board to know about you?
Well, I wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to review my NJSPA transcript. Okay? I'm only one of two Board Members in Lacey that have completed all the Board Member Academy requirements and hold both the Master Board Member Certification and the Certified Board Leader Certificates. Donna McAvoy was the only other Board Member to ever complete those same requirements. I also have experience in negotiations, having participated in all three union contracts, the LTEA, the Child Study Team, and the LTASA. I recall writing at least two superintendent evaluations since I wasn't conflicted, so I have experience with that as well. I served on all three committees, policy, finance, and curriculum. I also served two years on the NJSPA Legislative Committee, and we met in Trenton, and I had a travel for that. I also participated in the superintendent search in 2016. I have no conflicts, no relatives working for the district, no reason for recusals. I already mentioned that I only missed one business meeting in six years, and I attended many other special meetings as well. I also attended, voted, or represented Lacey at the NJSPA Delegate Assembly for more than six years, it was a public meeting, and I went several times as a guest. I also attended all the six NJSPA workshops in Atlantic City, and that's where I took many of my training sessions. To this day, I still review the district's monthly bills and vouchers and have been doing so for approximately 16 years. I've paid taxes in Lacey for over 26 years. I mentioned all the meetings that I attend regularly, and I don't think there's anyone else that has this background. I keep very busy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina.
Done?
Yeah. All good. Who's next?
Carrie.
Carrie.
Carrie?
I was going to hand everyone my resume. They didn't have it?
They have.
They already?
Yes, they all have.
Sounds good.
All right, welcome, Mrs. Opitz. Thank you for applying to be a Board Member. I'm going to ask you a series of six questions.
Okay.
Please introduce yourself to the Board of Education and give them a brief description about yourself.
Okay, so my name is Carrie Opitz. I have lived in Lacey for almost my whole life, about 39 years. I live here with my husband, Rob. We have three children in the school district, two girls at Cedar Creek, one at Mill Pond in the pre-K program. So, I was just going to look at my resume. So as far as my education, I have Bachelor's in Accounting and an Associate's Degree in Business Administration. I also have a fear of public speaking, so it's kind of ironic that I'm going for a public position. As far as volunteering in town, I've been on the Mill Pond PTA as a treasurer. I'm also currently on the Cedar Creek PTA as a treasurer. And then, for work experience, basically like financial roles and compliance-type roles, I was an auditor at Brigada in Atlantic City, that was fun, but basically just auditing like financial records, lots of SOPs, like standard operating procedures, policies, making sure team members were complying, doing interviews with the team members, because of course, everything was regulated by different institutions, like the Gaming Control Commission and things like that. So lots of experience with like policies, reviewing policies, and presenting those results to senior management. My other role, I was an account manager for some Big Pharma companies, so basically another regulatory position, doing like sample accountability, so reconciliations and writing business rules, making sure that the client was in compliance with the PDMA, which was the Prescription Drug Marketing Act, and I was promoted in that role to Senior Account Manager. And then, I currently work for Hackensack Meridian Health, been there for about six years. I am the manager for the network for productivity for all 11 hospitals, all of the physician offices, and all of the clinical sites. So I work, I report up to, I report up through to the C-suite, so I report to the Chief Nurse Executive for the whole network, and the Chief Operating Officer.
Hold on a second.
Sure. Can you step out?
For the...
Can you repeat that one?
Yeah, so I was just saying how I report up to the Chief Nurse Executive in our corporate headquarters in Edison, and I just thought that was important to call out because I work with like every level of our organization. So I work with the nurses, I work with their management, the hospital level, like administration team, and then up to the C-suite team, which is like the COO and the CEO. So that's like my professional experience, and I just thought some of that could translate well to working on the Board as a school Board Member. Some of the reasons why I'm not doing this, I'm not doing this for like name recognition or any political, like I have zero political aspirations to, I heard someone say to me, like, is this the minor leagues for like town council? And I said, I'm not sure, but that's not why I'm doing this. I have zero like name recognition, I'm not trying to do anything like that, I'm just trying to protect like the public education for our schools and for Lacey schools, and that's why.
Okay, thank you. Kind of answered this, but what motivated you to apply to be a Board Member for the Lacey Township Board of Education?
So I was contemplating running for a few years, like in the regular election, but specifically this past year, I really was confident in the candidates, including Jack and including the three new people that ran. I thought everyone would make a great fit for the team, so I kind of hung back, and then this was just like a circumstantial situation, happenstance that it came up, and I thought I could give it a try.
Okay. Community involvement is a big part of what makes Lacey strong. How have you taken part in or supported the community since becoming a resident?
Well, specifically with the schools, I thought, well, yeah, I'm a parent in the school, but like if that's not enough, you kind of have to get more involved. So I went, when the schools first restructured with Mill Pond being pre-K, they needed like a whole new PTA Board, so, because all of those parents were moving on. So that's when I went and I said, I can do the treasurer role, because nobody wanted to do it, and I figured that was my way to at least help out, is any way that I could. And then, as my girls went to Cedar Creek, I figured, let me move on to Cedar Creek, help there, so this is my second year doing the PTA volunteer work there.
Okay, there you go. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing our district right now?
A few would be, I just really wish people would self-educate more with the Board. I feel like the community trust should be greater with the Board, but unfortunately, for whatever reason, it's not as strong as it could be. I don't think it's anyone's fault necessarily, I just don't think people take the time to be proactive and research what they should. So I would like to kind of hopefully help to change that a little bit. And then, of course, the funding, I think we should be, not be getting the short end of the stick with the funding from the state, so that's a big one.
All right. If a controversial issue divides the community, how would you help the Board make a fair decision?
I think it's all about like communication and active listening, and making sure being collaborative, being supportive, a cohesive team as a Board Member, and having that like psychological safe space as a team, so that's a big one. I actually just went to a training this week for work, and the biggest part of it was like the active listening and communicating clearly. They actually used an example, like an analogy that I wanted to, that I thought I could use tonight, was like the chocolate cake analogy. It was like, if you communicate to someone, picture chocolate cake, each person gave a different response, like someone was like German cake, somebody else was fudge cake, and whatever, it was just all different answers. So it was like making sure that you clearly, precisely say what you mean when you're talking, so hopefully if there's divisive issues, you know, just working together.
Great. Is there anything else you would like to share or that you would like the Board to know about you?
I didn't expect that question. No, just that I really hope, I just want to contribute to making the schools thrive, and you know, that's not an easy thing to do, it's like an easy thing to say, but my kids obviously go here, and all the kids that go to the school. I want them to like really be proud of going to the schools. I work with a lot of people from Ameth County and up north, and they're, oh, we have these great school systems and stuff, and it's like, well, we do too, so, just contributing to that. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
John.
John.
Welcome, Mr. Sotelo.
Hello.
Thank you for applying to be a Board Member. I'm going to ask you a series of six questions.
Okay.
Please introduce yourself to the Board of Education and give them a brief background about yourself.
Okay, so my name is John Sotelo Jr. Brief background, I work in IT. I'm a IT Systems Support Engineer. I worked for the second-largest busing, student busing company in North America. I've worked, worked in IT for a while now, so it's been pretty, pretty, pretty good for me. I, I, husband, you know, my beautiful wife, I have three children. Two of my children graduated through the high school already, they're on to their college excursion, so that's always a very nice thing to see, you know, coming out of the school district and being able to go to college. My youngest is in the middle school, and she's part of the STEM program. I am the current Chairman for the Performing Arts Boosters Association here at the high school. I work as, we work as a team, we try to fundraise for as much money as we, as we can keep, we can bring in, so that way we can keep the program solvent. As well as that, I also reside on the, the Main Boosters Board, I am Sergeant at Arms there. At the Main Boosters at the high school, we also provide, we oversee all of the sub-boosters that, you know, different programs, activities, sports, things like that, and again, it's, you know, we fundraise for a purpose, we fundraise to keep the program solvent. So I just want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity here, so, thank you.
What motivated you to apply to be a Member of the Lacey Township Board of Education?
Well, I mean, obviously because of being part of the boosters, I do a lot of work in the schools, I see a lot of things that happen here. You know, it's been, it's been a while since I've been in some of the grammar schools, but a lot of what we do is in the middle school and in the high school, so we see the programs, we see the activities, we want to make sure that that's solvent for the future. I'm sure everybody probably knows me and has seen me before, but you know, obviously when we were having the issues with the state budgeting, which is still continuing, obviously, you know, I was one of four people that actually went to Trenton to fight for this township, two students, and I congratulate the two of them, that it was great, and you know, it was a great thing to see them out there too with us, you know, fighting for the township, and I want to continue that fight. I want to continue to make sure that the township, the school district, gets what it needs, it has everything that we could possibly give for any, any one of the children that walk through these doors, from the time they first walk through these doors to the time that they exit when they're seniors.
Very good, thank you. Community involvement is a big part of what makes Lacey strong. How have you taken part in or supported the community since becoming a resident?
So again, I guess I can kind of go back to the, the boosters and, you know, the boosters' participation here, so, again, being the Chairman of the Performing Arts Boosters, I do a lot of work with the marching band, with the drama department, and if anybody hasn't seen it already, please do go and see the play, it is starting tonight, tonight's the opening night, so today, tomorrow, Saturday and Sunday, for a shameless plug here. So, yeah, so we, we do a lot of work with them, we try to make sure that everything is okay. The, the work that I do with the marching band, it's bringing them, you know, getting them everything, if you've ever been to any of the football games, you've seen me drive out on the field with the quad and pull the equipment out and put the equipment back. I also, I also help them out with their, their competitions, I rent the truck, I drive the truck, the quad, the trailer, bring them out there to represent the township and the community, obviously, we want to try to show what we can showcase here. Yeah, so the majority of, of my work that I do is with, the volunteer work is with the school district.
Okay, thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing the district right now?
So, I mean, number one, the biggest one is going to be the budget. It's always the budget, it's been the hot topic for the last couple of years. We've been dealt a really bad hand, obviously, from the state, and we, we need to find new and constructive ways of being able to provide enough money into the district to keep the, the students active in the school district, right? So, but what I mean by active is not just coming into the school district and, you know, sitting in a classroom, sitting in a chair, opening a book, reading, or Chromebooks now, dating myself here, you know, not just reading out of a book and learning there too, but it's things that keep them engaged in, in the school district too, engaged in their schoolwork. It's the outside activities, it's different things like clubs, again, kind of going back to the performing arts side of things, you know, the performing arts, some of the kids, you know, they're not, they're not athletes, you know, and their, their avenue is performing arts, and similar, you know, similar things are, you know, with some of the athletes and different clubs and art clubs, things like that, so. The biggest thing is just, just to make sure that the kids are getting their full, that well-rounded education when they come in, again, from the day that they come in to the day that they leave, that they have that education, and that gives them that insight, it gives them that, that drive to do things when they grow up, when they leave the school district, and when they go on to bigger and better things.
Right, good. If a controversial issue divides the community, how would you help the Board make a fair decision?
I'd have to look at all the information that's provided, that's the biggest thing, right? So part of, part of me, part of what I do in IT is analyzing things, right? So I'm a very analytic person, I'm going to sit there and I'm going to look through as much as I possibly can by the information that's provided to us. Obviously, if you're on the Board, you get a little bit more information. I'm going to look and see what the options are. If, if option A is better than option B, then maybe there's a compromise somewhere in between, you can do something like that. You know, similar to going back to the, the last budget, you know, we, we were looking at, you know, smaller budget, it was 3.15%, then it turned into a higher budget, then it was like 14 and a quarter percent, yeah, 14 and a quarter percent, something like that increase, that was, I was against that, I did not want to see that, obviously. But at the same point, I didn't want to see the state come in either, because if the state came in, it would have been a lot more than that. So where's the compromise in there? The big thing is, you know, being on the Board of Education, you're working as a team, you're not working as a sole person, right? You have your ideas, you have your opinions, and you're working as a team together to try to make the best possible decision for the community. And that means listening to community members, too. Not everybody has a bad idea, so maybe we need to open our ears a little bit more and listen to everybody, and try to see if there's a way that you can compromise to get a better resolution.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you'd like to share or that you would like the Board to know about you?
Not necessarily, I just, I just, again, want to thank everybody for, for giving me the opportunity to be here, and if I am the candidate, then I will definitely make sure that I will do whatever I can to, to appease as many people as I possibly can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon?
I was wondering if he was missing it.
Yeah. Welcome, Mrs. Kleidens.
Hi.
Thank you for coming, thank you for applying. I'm going to ask you a series of six questions.
Okay.
Please introduce yourself to the Board of Education and give them a brief background about yourself.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Kleidens. I just moved to Lacey Township about three years ago, but my family has been here for about 40 years, it's always been my dream to move down here, and we're here. So background, my, most of my background is I have been an executive in healthcare for about over 20 years, so most of my experience is all in acute care hospitals, however, I'm also an adjunct professor at several different colleges throughout New Jersey. I'll start there.
Okay. What motivated you to apply to be a Member of the Lacey Township Board of Education?
For the last 10 or 15 years, I've been very interested in local government. I was Municipal Alliance for Piscataway Township, and I started, when we were living in Bridgewater, I started to get involved with that local government, and then, again, we moved down here, so I did join the Municipal Alliance, and when I saw the open chair, I decided to, to apply.
Okay. Community involvement, community involvement is a big part of what makes Lacey strong. How have you taken part in or supported the community since becoming a resident?
Yes, so I've recently joined Municipal Alliance and the Task Force for Drugs Awareness. I did a few of the Lacey Township Day, we did the Five K.
there too, but it's things that keep them engaged in, in the school district too, engaged in their schoolwork. It's the outside activities, it's different things like clubs, again, kind of going back to the performing arts side of things, you know, the performing arts. Some of the kids, you know, they're not, they're not athletes, you know, and their, their avenue is performing arts. And similar, you know, similar things are, you know, with some of the athletes and different clubs and art clubs, things like that. So the biggest thing is just, just to make sure that the kids are getting their full, that well-rounded education when they come in. Again, from the day that they come in to the day that they leave, that they have that education and that gives them that insight, it gives them that, that drive to do things when they grow up and when they leave the school district and when they go on to bigger and better things.
Right, good. If a controversial issue divides the community, how would you help the board make a fair decision?
I'd have to look at all the information that's provided. That's the biggest thing, right? So part of, part of me, part of what I do in IT is analyzing things, right? So I'm a very analytic person. I'm going to sit there and I'm going to look through as much as I possibly can by the information that's provided to us. Obviously, if you're on the board, you get a little bit more information. I'm going to look and see what the options are. If, if option A is better than option B, then maybe there's a compromise somewhere in between. You can do something like that. You know, similar to going back to the, the last budget, you know, we, we were looking at, you know, smaller budget, it was 3.15%, then it turned into a higher budget, then it was like 14 and a quarter percent, yeah, 14 and a quarter percent, something like that increase. That was, I, I was against that. I did not want to see that, obviously. But at the same point, I didn't want to see the state come in either, because if the state came in, it would have been a lot more than that. So where's the compromise in there? The big thing is, you know, being on the Board of Education, you're working as a team. You're not working as a sole person, right? You have your ideas, you have your opinions, and you're working as a team together to try to make the best possible decision for the community. And that means listening to community members, too. Not everybody has a bad idea. So maybe we need to open our ears a little bit more and listen to everybody and try to see if there's a way that you can compromise to get a better resolution.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you'd like to share or that you would like the board to know about you?
Not necessarily. I just, I just, again, want to thank everybody for, for giving me the opportunity to be here. And if I am the candidate, then I will definitely make sure that I will do whatever I can to, to appease as many people as I possibly can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon.
I was wondering if he was missing it.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for applying. I'm going to ask you a series of six questions.
Okay.
Please introduce yourself to the Board of Education and give them a brief background about yourself.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Kleindt. I just moved to Lacy Township about three years ago, but my family has been here for about 40 years. It's always been my dream to move down here, and we're here. So background, my, most of my background is I have been an executive in healthcare for about over 20 years. So most of my experience is all in acute care hospitals. However, I'm also an adjunct professor at several different colleges throughout New Jersey. I'll start there.
Okay. What motivated you to apply to be a member of the Lacy Township Board of Education?
For the last 10 or 15 years, I've been very interested in local government. I was municipal alliance for Piscataway Township, and I started, when we were living in Bridgewater, I started to get involved with that local government. And then, again, we moved down here, so I did join the municipal alliance, and when I saw the open chair, I decided to, to apply.
Community involvement, community involvement is a big part of what makes Lacy strong. How have you taken part in or supported the community since becoming a resident?
Yes, so I've recently joined municipal alliance and the Task, Task Force for Drugs Awareness. I did a few of the, the Lacy Township Day, we did the Five K. So I'm getting to learn all of the different things that go on in the township and supporting that. Also, very active Elks member, Lacy Elks member. I'm the Drug Awareness Chair there now, and my husband is the Chair of the Antlers. So we, we do deal with a lot of the high school students and do a lot of functions with them, so it's great getting to meet them, getting to get involved with them.
Okay, great. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing our district right now?
Finances. I think a lot of the challenges come from, you know, government and not being able to get the resources and the, and the finances needed to, to do what we need to do and to have that trickle down. And staffing, I think, is another huge issue. I have very experience with advocating on Capitol Hill with my association, and I think that that's something that needs to be focused on as well for education.
Thank you. If a controversial issue divides the community, how would you help the board make a fair decision?
I'm sorry, can you repeat it?
If a controversial issue divides the community, how would you help the board make a fair decision?
I think having as much information as possible is the first part. Doing the research and finding out, you know, obviously it's such a broad question, depending on what the, what the issue is and how it divides the town, but also, you know, being on the same page as the rest of the board and trying to do what is best for the community and also, more importantly, for the students.
Okay. And is there anything else you'd like to share or that you would like the board to know about you?
Um, I, I kept my first one short, so I think, you know, as far as my experience with healthcare, I, some of my strong points are policies and compliance, budgeting and resource management, risk management. And then also with being an adjunct professor, I do have, I, I did teach electronic medical records, legal medical records, so I do have experience with curriculums and accreditation through my association there. And just being able to time management and subject matter expertise for those issues. I have a very strong passion for mental health and substance abuse, not only from a personal family, but also my history. I used to work at Carrier Clinic, and we have a very, we have an East, East Mountain District School, so we had a very high student population there. And being part of that and seeing how much support and, you know, as, as they say, it takes a village, and I firmly believe that we are that village outside of their homes. And I think that that is such an important part of what we can do for, for these students.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go into executive session now. Be it resolved in executive session, be convened for the purpose of discussing, we're going to discuss the vacancy candidate interviews, confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation and bullying, confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload, and confidential personnel matters. Subject matters of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately 90 minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to resume the meeting. First, I'd like to thank the four candidates who came out tonight and had an interview. Jennifer Kleindt, Regina De Senza, Carrie Opitz, and John Satello. And we're going to go right into nominations. I'd like to open nominations for the board positions. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Carrie Opitz, please.
Do I have any other nominations? Okay, I'd like to close nominations. Can I have a motion to close?
Uh, close nomination, close nomination, sorry.
My second.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Okay. Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Conady.
Yes.
And Mrs. Claus.
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. So next steps, they'll be reaching out to you. You'll need to pass a background check, and then we'll swear you in next month at the board meeting, okay? All right, congratulations. Okay, I'm going to change the tone a little bit. Okay, "Good evening, students, families, faculty, and members of our community. It is with our profound sadness that we gather today following the tragic loss of one of our students. Losing a young person is something no school community is ever prepared for. Our hearts are with the students, family, friends, and all who are grieving. In times like these, we are reminded of the importance of supporting one another. Every student in our district matters deeply, to their families, to their teachers, and to us, the Board of Education. We want every young person to know that they are valued, they are seen, and they are never alone. We encourage our students to reach out to a trusted adult, a counselor, a teacher, or a friend when they are feeling overwhelmed. We provide counseling and have a safe place to talk. As a community, let's honor the students' memory with kindness, patience, and with renewed commitment to caring for one another." I would also like to thank Mr. Zalinski and the crisis team. They met on Sunday, and they put in a plan in place for Monday morning for the staff and the students and the community. They did an outstanding job. But again, it's with sadness that we have to report this. I think that's all I'm going to say right now. I'd like to hand it over to the students' representatives, and again, I'm sorry that you lost one of your friends.
All right, good evening, everyone. So SGA met on different days this month, month due to testing. Freshmen met on November 17th. They are right now planning their June future teacher in unsung hero. The sophomores met on November 13th. They are also planning their future teacher in unsung hero for May. The juniors met on November 11th. They're planning their April future teacher in unsung hero, and they're prepping for the November 5th Powderpuff. Please come and support the students, juniors versus seniors. Believe five dollar entrance? Yes, anybody can come. There will be snacks and hot chocolate. And then the seniors met on November 17th. They are planning their March future teacher in unsung hero. We are also beginning to plan our Graham fundraiser and awaiting confirmation for payment options. Information should be sent out in the upcoming weeks to LTSD schools. Students will receive information regarding June 2026 senior trips and end-of-year activities in the upcoming weeks also. The executive board met on November 12th. Home, the homecoming was a great success. SGA brought in $6,800 to the SGA account for scholarships and SGA activities. On November 11th, Veterans Day, the Veterans Day ceremony, all officers attended. Cooper and I read speeches and placed the wreath in remembrance. All classes have board members who are in charge of also planning Battle of the Classes, and Battle of the Classes will be December 17th through the 23rd. The next SGA meeting will take place on Monday, December 1st. I'm going to hand it off to Cooper.
Thank you very much. And for our November unsung hero, I would like to please welcome Samantha Saboko down to the stage. Can we all give her a big round of applause? So this year's November unsung hero is Samantha Saboko. Sam is very involved in many activities, and her commitment has led her to thrive in leadership positions. She is a field hockey captain, a DECA vice president, the head yearbook editor. She's the executive board activities coordinator for the Student Government Association, and she's also a member of the National Honor Society. Academic-wise, Sam holds a high GPA and is enrolled in the OCC program at Lacy. She holds a high academic drive for herself and gives her best effort in everything she does. Sam holds multiple varsity letters, including fall, winter, and spring sports. Sam is always willing to help her classmates out and provide assistance when needed and continuously promote school spirit when completing activities. Sam is a role model for Lacy Township High School and always has a positive attitude. Congratulations, Sam.
Congratulations. Okay, now I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Zalinski.
Okay, and I'm going to shift gears a little bit. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to take a moment to recognize the exceptional work that defines a big part of our school community here at the high school. The events placement scores achieved by our students this year are nothing short of phenomenal. They are a powerful testament to academic rigor, student effort, and most importantly, the transformative power of the dedicated teachers that we have. This year's results, which include some hundred, 100% passing rates in some cases, reflect countless hours of preparation, mentorship, and deep subject matter expertise from a truly outstanding group of educators. They have guided our students through the most challenging curricula and have helped them unlock their highest potential. We're going to have Mr. King, who's already come down. He's going to help me recognize our stellar AP teachers tonight. Okay, the kids all get their scores, and they get them at home, and we want to make sure that the, the man behind and the women behind the legends will get recognized tonight. And we're going to have a certificate for them, and we're going to recognize them. Mr. King.
That is what it comes down to. We've talked about test scores and nationally given tests. The AP exam is given nationwide. It is so controlled that people take it the same time each day it's given across the states. So our teachers work very hard. On top of that, the course is a bit shortened because the test is given at the beginning of May. So where some teachers have until the middle of June to complete their coursework, these teachers go into September knowing their clock stops at the beginning of May. Sometimes May 1st, sometimes May 12th, but within those first two weeks of May, their course is finished up, the kids have taken their test, and the scores are recorded. So for them to achieve this much success with the students we had is incredible. It's definitely the students' hard work and the effort, but with the inspiration and leadership of our teachers, I am extremely proud to stand before you this evening and announce our amazing AP teaching staff. First down is Matthew Barata. Matthew, come on down. Next, we have Stephen Geiger. John Kuzan. So again, congratulations to all of our AP teachers. What you do in the classroom each day is both inspirational and incredible. And Mr. Zalinski, if you'd take a picture. Shooting?
You're the principal, get a picture. Good job. All right, good, thank you.
I would now like to introduce the November seniors of the month. This month, we have three seniors. Our first senior is Riley Tilton. Riley, please come on down. A round of applause for her family who are here. Come on up, you're right.
I'm Riley Tilton, and I'm proud to be named November Senior of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
Congratulations, Riley Tilton, on being named Senior of the Month, November 2025.
The sports I'm in include field hockey and lacrosse, and I'm in several clubs such as the National Honor Society, the Thespian Society, the Drama Club, and ADA.
Riley Tilton is one of the hardest-working, most conscientious, and adorable students that I've ever had the pleasure of teaching in 25 years. It's an honor to see her grow from a very young girl into lovely young woman that she is today, and she is bound for really great things.
Some of the best memories I've made here at LTHS are with my field hockey team and my closest friends.
She's just really funny and really nice to be around, and just has a really lovely spirit and brings something really unique and positive to the room. I really enjoy spending time with her and hearing her unique insights as well.
I'm looking to major in environmental science and political science.
Congratulations to you again, Riley. You deserve the world, and I'm so excited for what the future holds for you.
Congratulations, Riley. Our next senior of the month is Aiden Flynn. Aiden, come on down. Round of applause for his parents who are here this evening.
Hello, I'm Aiden Flynn, and I'm proud to be named November Senior of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
Congratulations to Aiden Flynn on winning Senior Student of the Month.
I've been a part of the wrestling program for the past four years, and I'm the senior captain this year, and I'm enrolled in the OCC program.
Aiden Flynn is the definition of a student athlete. He does a great job of balancing his academics and his athletics and his social life. Some things that set him apart from others are his work ethic, his resilience, and his ability to set goals and work towards those goals.
I would say my favorite memory in high school would be winning the division title with my wrestling buddies last year.
Aiden has a great character. He's a kid that I can go to, and I know I can trust him with things. He's going to be a great captain in his senior year. Some personal experiences, you know, there's a handful. Obviously, I've coached him for four years, spent a lot of time with the kid. But he's a returning two-time district champ, and high school wrestling, that's a tough accomplishment, so I'm proud of him for that. And he always enters tournaments with the vision of getting his goals accomplished.
Outside of school, I like to do anything outdoors, from fishing to hunting, hanging out with friends, and just always love to be outside.
All right, Aiden, I wish you the best of luck for the rest of the school year. Winter is coming. Looking forward to wrestling season, and good luck with everything going forward, buddy.
My future plans after high school are going to be to go to college and continue my, to get my bachelor's and just keep wrestling and continue my academics.
All right, congratulations, Aiden. Our September vocational, I'm sorry, our November vocational senior of the month is Kira McAllister. Kira, come on down. Here are the principal family here as well. Applause for them. Yes?
I'm Kira McAllister, and I'm proud to be named November Senior of the Month for Lacy Township High School.
Hi, Kira, congratulations on winning vocational school student of the month.
Throughout my four years of high school, I participated in fishing club and soccer.
So I've had the pleasure of working with Kira for four years straight. She's part of my lunch crew that comes in. I probably have spent over 200 lunch, lunch dates with her over the last four years. She's been part of my meditation groups, she's been part of me bringing in samples. She's always willing to try different things, such as my vegan jerky that I brought in. She's just a great kid.
Outside of school, I like to go hunting and fishing with my dad.
Kira, I am so super proud of you and everything that you have accomplished in the last four years. I wish you a super successful senior year and your journey beyond.
My future plans are to be a photographer and have my own business.
All right, that concludes my presentation. Mr.?
We're going to go into public comment in a minute. If you guys want to stay or leave, you're welcome to. Go right ahead.
Okay, some of you remember the flag, you're going. Yes.
Okay, all right. We're going to do public comment. Any audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand.
Congratulations on winning Vocational Schools Student of the Month.
Throughout my four years of high school, I participated in fishing club and soccer.
So I've had the pleasure of working with Kira for four years straight. She's part of my lunch crew that comes in. I probably have spent over 200 lunch dates with her over the last four years. She's been part of my meditation groups, she's been part of me bringing in samples. She's always willing to try different things, such as my vegan jerky that I brought in. She's just a great kid.
Outside of school, I like to go hunting and fishing with my dad.
Kira, I am so super proud of you and everything that you have accomplished in the last four years. I wish you a super successful senior year and your journey beyond.
My future plans are to be a photographer and have my own business.
All right, that concludes my presentation.
We're gonna go into public comment in a minute if you guys wanna stay or leave. You're welcome to. Go right ahead.
Okay.
All right. We're gonna do public comment. Any audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the board president. Comments will be made one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comments only, and there'll be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Anyone is entitled to a public comment. If there's a question for the board, there's an established chain of command to follow. Would anybody else like to, would anybody like to have a public comment tonight?
Regina descends of Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I just have one comment. I was reading the agenda and I see that Ms. Ormsby is on tonight's agenda as a resignation. Very sorry to see you go, and good luck to you in all your future endeavors. You will be missed.
We need to get the clock. Would anybody else like to have a comment?
Tony Rizoli, Sunrise Beach. Page seven of the agenda, use of facilities. One of the uses requested was for the Ware Town travel softball. Now, if there's a bunch of Lacey girls playing on a team, I understand it, but if it's just Ware Town, why are they using our Mill Pond facilities? Just a question. Also, I'd like, on page 12, number 10, congratulations to Mr. Brandeis. I see he's got his advanced degree from MA 30 to MA 60. It's a nice accomplishment. I'm glad he's improving himself. Policy 0167 is also down for the second reading. I disagree with it, basically because it limits, it limits free speech. And I think you ought to take a second look at it, and that's only my personal opinion. Any form of someone who comes up here and disagrees with you and stipulates something, well, that's fine, but if somebody in the audience also disagrees with the person who's disagreeing, the right of rebuttal should be allowed. That's also, that's something I would like you to take a look at. I mean, it's all a basic form of debate. And I know you're not going to debate, but it's a matter of free speech, in my opinion, First Amendment rights. I see that the administrative board secretary, Constance Stewart, is going to be replacing Ms. Ormsby, and I was just curious if that person is already a member of our group or is it an outside group? And the qualifications for that person to take over those skills, was it a recommendation from outside of us or was it a promotion from within? And, you know, it's a lot of money. It's 3,250 bucks a week, you know, that we're putting out, and that's a lot of tax dollars. And if you're doing, you know, 40-hour weeks, and if you're doing 50 weeks a year, it's over $162,000 that, you know, I want to make sure the money is well-spent. Because I see that we also have an assistant business administrator that we pay currently $115,000 to, and that's on page 16, a person by the name of Daniel Raff. And why wasn't that person considered or they don't have the ability? And if they don't have the ability, have they picked up any of the things that the current administrator would do? I also see that there's a human, new person that was recommended as a human resource person, secret confidential human resource secretary that enters things into an HRIS system, I guess. Now, HRIS systems are canned. You can get them from, you know, time clock companies and all kinds of different things, but who does the, who would put in this information that you'd have to have it classified as a confidential? Isn't all HR confidential? You know, and I just don't understand the wording and why we have to have it so specified as a confidential secretary out of an HR group? You know, I had, I had HRIS working for me, canned systems, and it's all confidential. So, all right. Maybe it's a reason to pay extra money? I don't see why. Question on district preschool. On policy 2470, I see you're having some difficulties with preschool kids coming in and the attendance of them, so you leave a spot open for them and you have to deny a spot to other people who want to get into that program because you don't have enough space, I guess. Okay, so you're gonna put-
Mr. Rizoli, we're not, we're not having a difficulty. We're proactively passing that policy.
Okay, I, I just, the way-
It's a correction of fact.
I'm looking at the policy and I'm-
Correct, correct. So we try to pass policies so we prevent a problem.
All right, well, I do have another suggestion. I know you're not gonna like it, but I'm gonna say it anyway. In the past, we've had preschool in Forkett River School where we had to- All right, anyway.
Wireless mic went nuts.
The wireless mic didn't turn off.
It's happened to me before, Tom. Don't worry about it. Okay. Can we extend my time, by the way?
We extended it one minute.
Okay. The reason I'm saying that, the Forkett River School, we had to make accommodation for bathroom space for the preschool kids, okay? And we had to go through the county superintendent, and this is all coming from me being at this mic many, many years and what's happened in the past. Okay. What's wrong with us taking a different look and instead of spending $883,000 on the agenda tonight for playground for preschool-
That was grant-funded.
I know it's not approved yet, it's gotta go for approval, but 883 grand is a lot of money for preschool teeter-totters, okay? Or whatever you want to call them for preschool. And we have to do that at every school. Why don't we just have all the preschool kids go to one school where it's already approved?
So, Mr. Rizoli, they all go to one school. They all go to Mill Pond School. That's why we're putting the playground there.
Okay.
It's all state-funded.
And we have enough bathrooms there?
We are not selling out a dime.
All right.
We did a bathroom project there, which was paid for by the state in the tune of a lot of money. So you're, you should call me.
All right. Well, the other reason I'm saying that is I also, and I know you're not gonna like this-
And what you're remembering is we went through the county office because we needed bathroom waivers.
Right.
All right? So that's why we go through the county office. We still have a couple of waivers at Mill Pond, but we constructed bathrooms so that we can accommodate the many millions of dollars that the state is giving us right now for our preschool program, which includes disabled and non-disabled peers.
All right, well, you're not gonna like this, the other part of what I was gonna say.
Would you mind just taking a seat and coming back up? Your time is up. I appreciate it. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Everyone, my name's Dan Tonner. I'm Ocean County's high school Republican chairman and founder of the Dan Tonner Project. Before I get going, I just want to take a minute and say what a big thank you to Mrs. Armatto. I was really sad when I heard you weren't running again, but I think you've done a phenomenal job. And I just wanted to take this time to say thank you for all that you've done and I wish you nothing but the best. So thank you for that. On another note, this Saturday, I'm gonna be hosting a food drive in the Lacey, in the parking lot of the Lacey Food Bank between 12:00 and 4:00 p.m. I encourage everybody to visit our social media pages in the event that it is postponed because, you know, they're calling for rain and if we happen to postpone it, people should know. Now, just a couple of things. Listen, Mr. Zalinski, I've emailed you several times within the year. You haven't gotten back to me once. And I watch these meetings a lot, and it seems to be a recurring thing, even if it's with, you know, the mom that was having trouble with, you know, her child and things like that. I know you can't go into specifics of what that all is, which I understand, but still. And I have friends that have sent me numerous things that, you know, in the classrooms that continue to go on. I'm not gonna say what it is, because I'm sure people are smart enough to understand what I'm saying. You know, certain ideological flags, right? But, and the reason I bring that up is because for Halloween this year, my friend went to school and wearing an ICE immigration costume. And listen, it's a costume, it's for Halloween. And does anybody know what happened to him? Well, he was thrown out of class, sent to the office, and told to remove what he was wearing, and got detention. And, you know, as young conservatives, we're really bombarded with this, you know, for the most part, woke culture in our school systems, which is one of the reasons why I went to homeschool. I didn't want to be around it anymore. And it's nothing crazy, but it's still there. And, you know, I watch these things a lot, and I just think that it's pretty unfair that we allow these certain things to happen, and yet he can't go to school wearing what he wants to wear. Now, I'm 16, I'm about to be 17-years-old. You know, my friends and I, we got better things to be doing right now, all right? But it's the lack of action that we see that is the reason why I get up here and say these things, because somebody's gotta do it. And, you know, I sometimes wish I could just rewind to fourth grade to Mrs. Stover's class, because she was, in my opinion, an angel sent by God, and she's just one of the best teachers I've ever had, when things really didn't matter that much and when people just use common sense. And to the patriots in the room, stand up for what you believe in, do not fear, let's get back to common sense, and let's unite so that we can leave the rest at home and we don't have to get up here and say this. May God bless you all, and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to have a public comment? Okay, I think we're gonna move on then.
Mr. Rizoli. Oh, Mr. Rizoli.
Oh, you're right. You get five more minutes. Oh, then you go first. No, no, it's okay. You, before, yeah. Mr. Rizoli, he just needs a turn.
Richard Bidnick, Lacey Citizens for Responsible Government. Tonight, I would like to congratulate our four new board members. They're all present here tonight. Steve, Meg, and Brandon, and Curry. I really look forward to working with you all and trying to make our school district a better institution, more fiscally responsible, and one that is catering to all the citizens in our community and their interests and their desires for our children and for our town and our community. I think that is really important, and I'm very pleased to be the first person to get up here and actually welcome you and wish you the greatest success. I want to work with you guys. You're the future. So I appreciate that. On the public participation policy, this is my personal opinion about it. It should not be limited any more than it is. I remember when I came to these meetings, when we didn't have any public participation limit times. You can go back and watch the videos, they're actually online, where we, we didn't try to cut back the time of the citizens who are coming up here to actually spend the time to address the board. I think it's, it's very, very important. This is really the only opportunity that our citizens have to be able to address the board, and the idea of cutting that time back, I think, is, is just, does a disservice to all of us here in our community. And it's true, Mr. Rizoli said, you know, if someone heard something that someone else was saying after they got up here and then they wanted to add on to their comments, we wouldn't be allowed to do that with the way you want to change it. I mean, going to six minutes versus having actually 10 minutes, I don't see that as a plus. Does anybody see that as a plus? I mean, we kind of like look at this as like, you know, we're supposed to be a democracy. We want to hear from our citizens. A lot of the discontent that has gone on in our community is because people don't feel that anybody's listening to them. And to cut back that time any more than you're already doing that, I think is just going to cause more, more issues. I'm just asking you to think logically about this. I mean, do you really want the school to move forward? Do you really want the public to be involved? Do you want to build something with the community, or do you want to cause more division? This is something that the board needs to come to terms with, and we are gonna have a new board, so maybe even if you do pass it tonight, a new board may change it come January. But I think it's really, really important that we kind of like look at that. And the other thing I wanted to mention was something that Dan had mentioned to me. He just spoke here. He brought up about the pride flags in the classroom, and I remember I spoke about this, maybe it was a year ago or so. And if the board passed a policy that states that you're not to have that in the classrooms, why are some of the teachers defying that ruling? I mean, if we're going to have policies, we need to enforce them. And I would assume that that's what the administration would be doing. I feel very strongly about this because, quite frankly, as a gay person, I also understand how when you try to push something on someone else, you make them feel uncomfortable. And I would never want to have another person feel uncomfortable because they, I felt like I was pushing my lifestyle or my opinions about certain things like that, especially to young people at formative ages. I understand the issues for other gay students, but I'm going to tell you this, like I said a year ago. Be the best that you can be. Shine. Make an example of who you are. And it doesn't matter whether you're gay, straight, whatever your orientation is, you will shine and make a difference. I know I've done it in my life. I've never allowed my sexual orientation to ever, ever interrupt anything that I was doing. So I'm, I'm asking all of us to come together on this. The teachers need to understand, there may be students who feel uncomfortable if they see that in the classroom. And why are we segregating certain people, certain classes? We're all the same. We are not special. We are equal, and we need to stick to that formation with, with all of the things that we do. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rizoli, you can go now.
Okay, this is way outside of the box. Now, as you said, we have bathrooms, we spent the extra money, we're gonna put in this, this playground. That's a lot of money going into one facility. Is it possible to also, besides preschool, put in special needs kids who need the extra attention, who need the extra facility adaption, to bring them to one facility, along with the preschool in the same facility, in the future? Something to think about. I don't know if the law allows you to do it.
You do want to.
But if you could do it, I think it would better serve not only the preschool kids, it would better serve the special needs kids that really need the extra adaption. Okay? Something to think about, that's all I wanted to say. I know it's crazy, but if it could be done. It's not a money saver. It's, I just think it's better for the kids all around. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. We're gonna go on with board committee reports. Mr. Bell, can you start with policy, please?
Sure. All right, we had our meeting. It was myself, Jack Condey, Linda Walker, and Mr. Zalinski. We went over the regulations for review and discussion, policy 2470, district preschool program attendance. Ms. Kukowski detailed the new attendance policy for the preschool program, students who do not attend on a regular basis without a qualified excuse. Then policy 0167, public participation at board meetings. Mr. Zalinski reminded the committee that this will be presented for a second read at November Board of Education meeting. Then safety and security, incident management training. Mr. Zalinski described the training tabletop that the Lacey School Safety Team received compliments of Homeland Security. And then other business, interim business administrator Connie Stewart, Board of Education vacancy, PE playground. Mr. Zalinski informed the committee that the preschool playground will finally be started behind Mill Pond. Next meeting will be scheduled for January of 2026.
Good, thank you. Let's go to finance. Mr. Condey?
Thank you. Had a meeting on Thursday the 13th. It was myself, Mrs. Ball, Mr. Armatto, Mr. Zalinski, Ms. Ormsby. Discussed the- Discussed the Rock Grant update for the middle school, Noah Cow for here at high school, the update on that project, the referendum update, and the next steps, the referendum was passed. Land sale update, and the Milpon playground update, which is paid for by the state, not out of our pockets. Finance had an update on Policy Finder and the non-aligned staff salaries. Curriculum, we discussed a Nova Mat education and Hagnolia Consulting, and the contracts associated with the two of them. The administrative spot, and discussed a PLE grievance, and Houston facilities, and then the board vacancy, and how that was going to be processed. It was over 20 after 5:00, and the next meeting will be Thursday, December 11th.
Thank you. Ms. Armato, can you do curriculum?
Yes. So we had our meeting on November 17th at 2:30. Members present were myself, Mr. Armato, Ms. Claus, Mr. Zalinski, Ms. Amos, and Ms. Kravaski. The meeting adjourned at 3:30 PM. The curriculum was, Ms. Amos described the Mathematic Intervention Program for our Tier Three students. Ms. Amos detailed this program that will support teacher professional development on the science of reading and classroom intervention strategies. Out-of-state Field Trip, Men's and Women's Winter Track, Ocean Breeze Athletic Complex, Staten Island, WLTS, B&amp;H, Superstore, and Radio City Musical in New York City. Ms. Kravaski detailed the new attendance policy for the preschool program. Ms. Kravaski described the visit from Rutgers to observe our preschool program. Special Education. Ms. Kravaski detailed the DLM State Test that is given to our most cognitive impaired students. Ms. Kravaski detailed the activities of the newly formed Behavioral Support Committee at the elementary level. Ms. Kravaski detailed, Ms. Kravaski described the program where we collaborate with BCBA's to be in our building while they earn hours towards their certifications. And in Technology, Mr. Zalinski spoke about the new IP phones that were successfully installed over Fall Break. Additionally, he detailed the addition of a live human reader for our light speed program that monitors student Chromebook accounts. And Personnel, Mr. Zalinski highlighted the current personnel needs of the district. And Mr. Zalinski highlighted the finally approved preschool playground behind Milpon. Next meeting will be scheduled for January 2026.
Thank you. And I will do the referendum committee notes. It was myself and Mr. Bell, Mr. Zalinski, Ms. Ormsby, John Smith. Also attended was Kevin and Rita Santimbrino, Scott McFadden, and Tony Solomon. It was a brief meeting, we just talked about the media campaign, we talked about, the committee debriefed on the Seabreeze presentation, the committee discussed advertising for the referendum in the last days before the election, and the committee discussed the timing of the last mailer, text messages, and flyers. Discussion followed, and as of now, we don't have another meeting scheduled, but it will be coming soon. The referendum did pass, and I'd just like to thank the public. It was overwhelming support, so we're going to get moving on that, and you will be informed as soon as we get some more information on the process. Okay? Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to Mr. Zalinski's report. Do you have anything?
I have a comment, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we've had a tough week here in the district, but I don't want to let, you know, the results of the election go away. I just want to express, you know, the immense gratitude and profound relief that is shared by the administration, and I think collectively by the Board of Education, following the success of our November 4th bond referendum. The outcome of the vote, which was approved by a significant margin, you know, over seventeen hundred votes, is nothing short of inspiring. It's not about brick and mortar projects, it's just an affirmation that the community's commitment to our students, the safety of our facilities, and the long-term sustainability of our district. So I can't be more pleased with the outcome. It's a powerful vote of confidence in the district. We recognize that approving a bond proposal of this scope requires faith and commitment from our taxpayers, and I want to thank every single voter, yes or no, for taking the time to learn about the proposal, understand the necessity, and cast their, their vote. You know, we're able to synchronize this new investment with an upcoming retirement of debt. This timing will allow us to implement $30 million in essential, essential facility upgrades, including the roofing and HVAC replacements across all six schools, with no projected debt service tax increase. And we're going to receive, I'm going to remind you, we're going to receive 11.5 million from the state for this project. It represents millions of dollars in savings that will directly reduce the local taxpayer burden for these projects. The funding is a game changer, and it's going to assure that we address decades of, you know, maintenance that needs to get done, especially to our roofs, and everybody knows, you know, your integrity of your building starts with your roof. We look forward to the next steps in moving the district forward. We're going to provide regular updates to the board and the community as we move through the bidding, contracting, construction phases, and our goal remains to efficiently and effectively deliver on every project that we promised. So thank you once again. Thank you for your trust, your participation, and the investment in our kids, you know, because that's really what, what I always feel it's about. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to move on to board member comments. Mr. Armato, do you have any comments tonight?
I do, I'll be short. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the now four new board members. Little thought from my head here is to share with you, be never stray from your beliefs, stay true to your convictions, and always know, no matter if the vote doesn't go your way, you always matter when you sit at this dais. It always makes a difference. Tonight, I also want to share my condolences with my fellow board member Linda Walker. May God provide you with the strength to get through this tough time. I'm also heartbroken for the loss of this, of our, one of our students. Such sorrow for the community. It's hard to segue into some, some nice stuff here, but I will. Congrats to all the students and teachers that were recognized tonight. Good things for them, thank you. Best wishes for sharing, I'm going to miss you. You, you taught me a lot over the last, what is it, now, five years sitting on this dais, and very grateful for the time that you always afforded me when I wasn't sure of next steps and how to do something. So thank you, I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
As for Jack and Linda, good luck to you. Thank you for, for sitting at this dais, and, and although we may have not agreed on everything, at the end of the day, we all came here to do something for the community, and I appreciate your efforts. As for Mrs. Armato, wink, wink, my wife, I'm going to miss our date nights. It was cheap. Didn't cost me anything, and I got to hang out with you, and for a husband, the best way ever. Me on one side, her on the other side. So she couldn't tell me how to do anything, I got to do things my own way here. So it was a pleasure, but I'll miss you, and thanks for your, for, for your job well done over the last three years. And for all my family and to all your families, Happy Thanksgiving, enjoy it, hug someone, kiss someone, let someone know that there's some great things going on, because at this point right now, where we're at a weakest, you know, nothing better than a hug. So enjoy the holidays with your friends, family, and loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the four new candidates. Look forward to working with you and learning from you as well. I'm going to miss those that are stepping down. Was just talking to Cheryl, and a lot of the things that I've learned in the last two years, it's, I tell everybody, it's been a cheap education, but just appreciate all that goes on here in the community. Very deep sorrow for Linda and the loss of her husband. Praying for her, and thankful for all that I've learned from her. And then the young man that lost his life, again, just a sad thing in the community, but it's part of life. Just watching a community go through those things and support one another is really what strengthens us. So looking forward to next year, but again, Happy Thanksgiving and enjoy the holidays. Don't kiss everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Armato?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. First, I want to congratulate all the newly elected board members. Thank you for stepping up to serve our schools and our community. I truly wish each and every one of you the best when you begin in January or December. You're going to learn a lot. I also want to extend my deepest condolences to my fellow board member Linda on the passing of her husband. And please know that so many of us are keeping you and your family in our thoughts and prayers, and we're here for you. These past few days have been especially hard for our community with the recent loss of one of our students, and my heart is with the students, families, and staff who are grieving. We're holding everyone close in our prayers. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Sharon Ormsby for her many years of dedication to the district. With her resignation effective January 1st, 2026, I want to wish her nothing but the best in her next chapter. She has served this community with professionalism and heart, and it's truly appreciated, and she's taught me a lot, so thank you for your patience, and she'll teach you guys. Oh, sorry, she won't. You're wonderful, Sharon. Thank you so much. As my term comes to an end in December, I just want to say how grateful I am for the opportunity to have served the students, families, and taxpayers of Lacey Township. I'll save my goodbyes for my final meeting, but I wanted to share my appreciation tonight. Wishing everyone a safe, peaceful, and blessed Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conde?
Congratulations to Meg, and Steve, and Brandon, and Carrie, and thank you to everyone else that I came out and voted, Sharon. If I could vote, I'd probably vote no, just because, but, uh, listen, you're the person behind the scenes working on so much, thank you. Does not go unnoticed, heavily complaining about anybody up here. To all of the students and staff, congratulations, and to the family and friends of our student that passed away, condolences. Happy Thanksgiving, please be safe, and like thirty-some days left?
Perfect.
It's less than that.
Thank you.
Counting the days?
No.
All right. Again, I'm just going to reiterate what they all said, but congratulations to our four new board members. We're excited. Change is hard, but it's good, but we're looking forward to it. There's a lot of training coming up, so just be patient, everybody, please be patient with us, and we'll have a new BA, well, we'll have an interim first.
She's here. Connie's in the back.
Oh, yeah? Oh, welcome. Okay. Thank you. So she'll be our interim. So you can be patient with us, because we have a ton of questions all the time. But, yeah, we're looking forward to a new, a new year, so, and Sharon, we'll talk next month, but she still has a month left with us. But, okay, we're going to move on to new business. Are you ready? Okay. One, A1 meaning minutes, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
I have to abstain, I wasn't present at the last meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
I have to abstain, I wasn't present at the last meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker, absent. Mr. Conde?
Yes.
And Mrs. Claus?
Yes. Did that pass?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. A2, list of bills, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes, but I need to abstain on you and my employer, 163 and 161.
Thank you. And Mrs. Claus?
Yes. A3 to A6, transfers, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes. A7 to 13, Finance and Facilities, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes. Page 7 and 8, A14 to 17, Tuition and Transportation, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes. A18 to 25, Other, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes. A26 to 27, Policies and Regulations, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
I'm good with everything, except for Policy P0167, I'd like to see the final read before I agree with that.
It was in your agenda.
Yep.
It was in your attachments.
No.
Here.
She hasn't labeled it.
So you want to?
You want to come back?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we start with then, Mr. Bell?
Yep, Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Armato?
Start to page one, two.
Hold on a minute.
It's not read up yet. It's been going on.
Does that pass on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why are you still?
I've been sitting for a week.
Oh, yeah?
Nobody cares, stop.
Oh, I do.
I'm good with it. But, just a small but, I don't think unless it's really, really nasty talk up on that podium, that we have the right to tell them what they can and cannot say. That's all I want to add to that. Because this is still America, and we still have the right to free speech, and although sitting on this dais, we can't respond, they have the right to tell us whether or not we're doing a good job or a bad job, and we have to take.
We wouldn't stop.
I'm just saying, and we have to be able to take that, and, you know, let's allow the public to voice their opinion, that's all.
How do you vote? Your yes on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then we're going to move on to A28 to 29, Hibbs, can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
And Mrs. Claus?
Yes. Page 9 and 10, Donations, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
And Mrs. Claus?
Yes. Page 10, Programs and Curriculum, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs., Mr. Armato?
Yes, and going to miss Mr. Timothy Dowd, he's a good one.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Oops, I went ahead. We're on-
We're on programs and curriculum, page 10.
Okay, yes.
And Mrs. Claus?
Hold on, Mr. Dowd's having here.
Yes. Professional Days Workshop and Travel.
Right.
Can I have a motion, please?
He's looking down. That's what threw me off. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?